Hello everyone and welcome to the Tuesday, March nineteen twenty twenty four meeting of the town board. The town has been in executive session discussing hiring in various departments. And consultation with legal advice for legal advice. They have a motion to close the exec session and open the work session.
Second.
All in favor?
Alright.
Okay, so tonight we want to welcome Pace Nexus. We're going to have a discussion about our Envision Newcastle program and our next steps. And we will be discussing a graphics package. So I will hand over the floor to you. Good evening.
Hi, everyone. Just as a kind of pre, I before I knew I was gonna come here, I had a dentist appointment. So I might be slurring words a little bit, so my apologies. But we're here and ready to show you what we have and excited. So I'm gonna share my screen and we'll get going. So since you guys were able to, if you have seen this already, I'll go slide by slide rather than overview like I usually do. We'll just go slide by slide and discussing and getting feedback and any edits that we need, so. So we created this little, I wanted to create this so that way we had a visual of our entire kind of process and what it might feel like and look like in terms of having having a period of awareness, initial engagement, hoping everybody decides to participate and participation, and then getting feedback and reflection from anyone. So this is kind of where we're.
Yeah, we're having a bit of a hard time seeing that.
Oh, okay.
From where we are, is there is there a way to?
I could zoom in. Yeah, I could zoom in. I'm gonna have to get out of this mode. Yes.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay. Just to clarify, if I may, this is just.
I don't think we can have it here, unfortunately.
This slide is more of a work process, a flow, a workflow slide. It's not really meant for for you to kind of judge the graphics or anything on. This is just.
Yeah. Thank you, Sabrina. This is this is internal. This is just for us to have an understanding of the process and a good grasp of. We, you know, we have a lot to do in a short amount of time, so.
Yep.
I created this just, this is like an internal for us. So I can zoom in like this, so anything you need me to zoom in, I'm gonna be in this mode. I can.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm gonna move on to the next slide, which this is our logo that's included, so you have it. Okay, so these are the social media templates. The idea of the social media template that they will, these will grow and live throughout the process. So as we get drone footage, as we get our video going, as we get more photos, these will have updated photographs and things like that that you that we can add to it. We will give you guys an initial set, so that way you can post on your individual channels and also on the town channels. And and then as as we get updated photos, we'll send those out. But you'll have one full set to get going and they'll they'll have all the sizes that you need. But I'll show you these as, so this one, this one has a moving. I'll zoom in on each one, make it easier. Can you guys see from where you're sitting?
Um, yeah, more or less, yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna go, I wanna go really close then. Uh, so this one just has in the different phrases and the dates. This is a pretty straightforward one. This one has a fun little animation. It's gray, let me see our map. The same one here, this one can have different spots in town that are in the in the acreage and has the dates here, so this one's just meant to have some photos in the background. Same idea, this one is meant to solicit like what do you see here? What do you envision here? And we would have a specific area again within within the program pictured here. This obviously is not, it's not.
No.
Castle. This is obviously not. You're like, where is this? Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, this is meant to be, I'll I'll play this so you could see it. This will, I'd like to use our drone footage for this purpose also. So the idea would, once we get the drone footage, we'll put this in here.
I have people to think that we're planning anything like this.
I think she's gonna replace it without.
It's a placeholder.
I know, but nobody's gonna see it other than.
Yeah, this is not gonna be released to anybody. This, she's just showing you the options of the social media platforms that you're gonna get when the package is ready.
Yeah. Yes. So and then this would have drone footage of of downtown Chabacoa in it. And then this one here is, this one's pretty straightforward. This is just what our tagline is and information to get them to go to the website, different areas in town and getting the word out. This is a pretty straightforward one. So.
I just want, I just wanna make sure people are clear that we are also looking at the area where the town hall is, the ball field, because people seem to be thinking that we're only looking at the parking lots.
Yes, so yeah, I think.
So I just, yeah, I just wanna make sure that we do do a good job of being clear.
Yeah, I agree with that. And I think having these other pictures will be helpful. And also like this one here, this is a good one for that to show specific. And in the caption, when you post this, in the caption, it could say, you know, this, you know, about wall field or whatever, it could be focused on this specific area.
I've got a question. I noticed that some places it says your future and some places our future. I'm assuming that's intentional, but could you explain the thinking behind it?
Yeah, sure. So I think in general, right, we have, when we think about connecting to people, we wanna end end about this project, we're thinking about our future as a community. But then, you know, everybody also has their own individual opinion. So some of these are gearing directly to that individual perspective. That that's specifically this one is the individual perspective. So here's a place they might see and visit all the time or take their kids to this ballpark all the time. And what do they see specifically there for themselves? So that's the idea is globally, it's our future. But then, you know, it is also an individual perspective. So that's why we're doing both, depending on the marketing piece. That sound good?
I like that bottom one, the middle one on top.
Yeah. The middle one on top.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
But I think they'll all work together.
Yeah, they will, they're great. I think it looks really good.
Okay, great. Um, so like I said, we'll we'll give you guys this set. This is the only one you won't get right away, cuz I still didn't, I still didn't tell Sabrina or get full approval, but we're hoping to do the drone recording this weekend. So as long as that's all good, then I'll be able to send this one over to you with this one.
Right, so um, so the drone is going to be of the entire area? Will there be close ups? And you know.
Yeah, so when we take the footage for the walking tour, then we will have more close ups that we'll have more, we'll have more close ups. The drone is going to be mostly up from a pie, but we'll take some on closer angles also, if, you know. Some kind of like the, you know, this a little closer in rather than like that. I mean, we won't be that far, but yeah. So I'll give you guys this the set of everything and then, like I said, you'll just be missing this later on. Okay.
Okay.
Good to move on?
Yes, we're ready to move on.
Okay. So I'm just gonna zoom out to talk about these as a whole and then I'll zoom in. These are the flyers, they're pretty straightforward. They they can be used anywhere you guys would like them. We made different options just with different language that's used from the document that you guys approved. So they can be put anywhere that you see fit. Some of them have different approaches, like this one is directly talking about, again, like your perspective and, you know, the acreage. So that way they really, like, that's kind of a like in-your-face perspective of like how much property we're looking at. And this one is saying, we wanna hear from you. It's, it has the language we have from our document and then our dates. And then if they wanna learn more or register and or find out what else we fun things we have going on, the QR code is here. Also, the website will be linked here too, in case, I don't know, something happens, the paper is ripped or whatever. And they can't get to the QR code, at least they also have the website there. So that's the idea of this one. This one is, this language goes specifically about the town lands surrounding the station and getting everyone together. It's a little shorter. And then this one is a little bit more robust in what the program is about and the invitation to get involved. So this one's got a little more content to it. So all are pretty straightforward and can be printed and used wherever you'd like to see.
Okay, it's dumb. No, so just to be clear, these these will rotate. Like, so when we send out our newsletters or people go on the website, we'll have rotating flyers just so people get, just get a variety of information and they look a little bit different each time.
I also.
And will they be static on the website?
Um, so these won't live on the website. These are more printed, all this material is within the website. So the other thing I was gonna tell you is that, so these are eight and a half by elevens, but all of these graphics that I'm going to give you, this set for social media that I'm going to give you in like LinkedIn size, like all the sizes that you need, you could use these too if you wanted to put them in your newsletter or, these are great to swap in and out also. You you can use these for, they're they're not, you don't have to just use them for social media. They'll be great graphics for you to use anywhere you wanna put them. You can put them on the website, you can, I'm sure you can put a, we can turn this into a gift and put it on the website. There's plenty of things you can do with these also. I didn't just, I didn't wanna make it feel like you just had this set, so you can you can use the set also. And these, and these will be updating, right, as we get photos and things like that, so you'll have fresh.
Have we thought about how we're gonna approach having on the name town website to make sure that people are aware and even.
Right, we already have it on the town homepage. We have one of those three flaggers now.
Oh, it's a full, it's a, sorry.
And um, yeah, and we'll be interchanging them, so every time people go on, we'll see something a little different every few days or maybe once a week. Yeah, there should be one on the homepage.
So so right now, there's um, there is a flyer on the homepage, right? When you go to the website under under what's new or or news. And then within the website, there is a home for the Envision project where we have more information and direct links to the Envision Newcastle website. So we can, we can change up the flyers on the what's new, they can mirror what is going out in the e-newsletter. And, you know, we can make sure that it's it's continually rotating. And the big push in timeframe for this advertising is really the second weekend of April through May. Okay, so right now, what's on there, it's called a soft opening where we're putting information out there, but it's not the big push. That's not gonna come until the about the second weekend in April when we start papering and putting up signs and getting everything, you know, in everybody's face twenty-four seven.
We come back from uh, from uh, break.
Basically, yeah, after spring break.
Yeah.
We don't wanna go out too soon, too strong.
Yes.
Right, it's good timing.
Yeah. Speaking of, oh no, we're not ready for that. I was gonna say, oh, we're ready to talk about the in-your-face marketing, but we're not. This is the flyer.
We'll talk about in-your-face.
Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, sorry.
Okay, is everyone all set with these flyers?
Yeah.
So.
Go into latest news.
If I have to do that much work, you guys have to tell me if I need to.
Okay, we're ready for this next slide.
Okay. So um, this was our coloring contest idea and I I put this in here, one, so you guys could see it and two, to discuss what the prize was going to be if we were gonna do that and how we were gonna do that. Basically, the idea in terms of graphics and implementation, we would have a page on the website dedicated to this that they can, so you you would have these flyers that are eight and a half by eleven that can be printed and handed out. And then these here would be downloadable from the website. So if they, my thought, but, you know, we can change it. My thought was if they were like from two to six, then they wanna color in the envision word, they can. They could download this, they put their name and then that we can hang them in town hall wherever.
How many prizes do you think we're looking at? Because we have some, Christina has a bit of town swag from last Community Day. We've got Frisbees, what else do we have?
Chip clips.
Chip clips, they're the older, you know, I don't know if they're Frisbees, I mean, we could.
So I think it's up to you guys, so there are a couple of ways you could do this. You could do, like, you would have to select winners that way, so. Or you could do like how our local library does, they take a name. If you submit, then your name gets in a raffle and then you're, you know, somebody gets picked each week for that raffle, so they get like a, you know, a raffle ticket for when they submit. That's one way you can do it, so that way you're not like choosing the best coloring.
Right, we can, yeah, pick a winner per week.
Yeah.
One per week or something.
Right, if you just, I was just asking whether or not we're elected.
So.
Or we could just rotate, we can just rotate them.
What do you mean by rotate?
Well, we could, you know, have a whole group of them and we rotate them through the website.
Oh, that, we will definitely be doing that. But in terms of a prize, so I could write it on here, I just wanted to know like what they would. So we would just say that they would get get entered into a raffle to win something every week and, you know, some someone might win something.
Okay, that sounds like fun. If you have suggestions for like what appropriate, like prizes.
Like piggyback swag might be, we'd love to hear.
Okay, yeah, Frisbees or swag.
We could continue it through through Community Day and stuff like that, so we would.
Okay.
Just in September, so.
Yeah, we could make a list of what what that might, but I'm gonna take our ice cream cone off, cuz it will be.
Yeah, we'll think about that.
Okay. Okay, so that's easy to, you know, just wanna take that. Okay. Everybody good with this?
Okay, yes. No choking.
Hang on. So this is the more kind of, here we are. This is what we're doing. This is the banner for in town, the hanging in town. The idea is that when you're coming in, you see the dates, uh, when you're going this way of the website. If we can use this digital sign, this is just some ideas I had. The the only thing is here, I'm just saying out loud, this is one letter over than what I saw, so that we can use. So I don't know if, if I can go one letter over or can't. But the idea.
Can you read that to me or can you zoom in?
I can definitely zoom in. I can do both. So when you're heading in, it would say, what do you envision here and have the website? And then they would see the banner on this side with the dates. And then if you're going the other way and you see the website on the banner, then this side could say envision with us and it would have the dates on it.
Okay, so just so you're aware, the um, the slides rotate through the sign, so they appear on one side and then they appear on the other side?
Ah, okay, I was thinking I can choose, okay.
Yeah, they're not, they're not static, okay?
Okay, okay. So, I mean, you know, I think it's just an added bonus to have it.
Yeah, I think this may be obvious, but I think seeing the words, what do you envision here? Where the sign is right opposite the Bell School Field feels a little bit misleading.
Oh, okay.
You know what I mean, because it's not.
Yeah, take it out here.
Yeah.
So what do you envision it?
Got it.
I think, I think maybe we should just say envision Newcastle and be consistent.
Okay. Yeah, that works. I think the big thing for me is that we have the website, so they know where to go, you know, so.
Right, but we we don't wanna confuse people, because believe it or not, people will be driving out of the train station really not know what what we're doing.
Okay.
They'll see a sign saying what you envision here, so it could be confusing.
I think you could just go with envision Newcastle or even just the website.
Yeah, that's.
Well, if it's just the website, then that doesn't say what's going on, so I'd rather say envision Newcastle.
The website says envision Newcastle.
Yeah, well, someone sees the website, it just, I would just like to see the words, because people are driving by, so. There's, there's no time to decipher a website necessarily.
Vision Newcastle, sign up today or, you know, something like that.
Yeah, like that, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. I I like what Ellie just said, envision Newcastle, sign up today.
Or register today.
Register and and have the dates and the website, but that that's a lot already.
That's that's true.
I think that's enough. I I think register today with the the website is enough. Envision Newcastle, register today. Again, this is, we only need to get them interested. We're not, we can't convey that much information on this sign.
Right.
We have them for a fraction of a second anyways.
So do you think if it was only CO as opposed to COM, that people would know that it's COM?
No, cuz CO is something.
Yeah, that's it, that's it. Yeah, so I don't know, cuz I don't know, can I squeeze in? Because what I was reading.
I I I don't, I I I can find out for you.
Okay, I think that's, we'll have to problem solve around that. I was, oh no. I could also, yeah, I have another idea, but let's see if we could. I could also make like a subdomain that's like shorter and that go, but that would be confusing, so.
Yeah.
It's better to see if we could fit and if not, we could figure it out.
Yeah, that's a tough one. Can't can't really do that.
On the banner.
Yes.
I, when it says what will you envision, I feel like there's a question mark missing.
Oh, yes, well, hmm, weird.
But that's not part of the logo though.
I know, but.
So maybe we should say something else.
Or it just says invite, you can also take this off or it could say, we have lots on the website that say like envision with us. If you wanted to add something.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay. That's, we have that throughout the website, I think that's a couple of pages.
Thanks, I just, it it was just kind of off.
No, that's a good, that's a good catch.
And do we have capacity limits at all of these events? Is it possible we would have to add them because too many people have registered and we can't accommodate everyone?
I would be so excited to be there.
You know, the the Bell School Auditorium can hold a lot of people.
Is that like us? Who's the us and with us? Is that us? I mean, I'm wondering if envision.
I mean, yes, it is.
I'm wondering if envision. I'm wondering if envision together sounds better than envision with us, because I don't know who the us is.
Envision together, I like that.
Yeah.
All good. If you do that on the sign as well.
Yeah. You mean here, yeah.
Yeah.
If that fits, that might. I'll have to, I'll put a little. Put a little.
You know, initially I like that together, but then it sounds a little bit unanchored. You know, I mean, we want people to know that they're doing this with the town. I like the envision with us better, because that is in fact what we're asking people to do. In other words, like they're not getting together on their own envisioning the town. You know, they are doing it with us and we are inviting people to do it.
I was confused by who the us was, but you're meaning the town.
Or, I mean, instead of anything like that, we could just put Newcastle instead of together trying. Envision Newcastle. Instead of trying to find something that works. Envision with us.
You also don't really need it also, because you have on the other side, I mean, you could also just let it live like this.
We have signs that are different on banners that are different on either side.
No.
Oh, no, it's usually the same.
So that's actually what I was thinking, is whether or not we're better off not putting the.
Dates.
No, not putting the website, putting the dates.
Even the same on both side.
Yeah.
No, but they're gonna need the, they're gonna need the website to explain what those dates are.
Yeah, exactly, that was exactly, I I feel like I could be convinced otherwise if if we can make sure that the website gets on this sign, then I feel, okay.
Yeah, I think it's all important information, so I like that it's all there, even if it's on two sides.
So we're not doing anything, we're not having any qualifier on the envision?
I thought you were doing envision with us.
Okay, let's do it. I will make this a.
What, Joe, what dates are we hanging the banner?
Oh, you guys tell us, so it's going to be uh, um, maybe second weekend.
April.
Do you tell us, are you putting up the eighth, the week of the eighth, the week of the fifteenth?
I have, we have, hold on, I'm gonna go.
It should certainly be up at least.
Could you, could you tell me again what it says on the top one? Can you go back?
Oh, sorry.
What does it say on the top banner?
Still in our future, I'm gonna go back to sharing. I have the dates already set for the, for this banner. I just, they're just not in this presentation, but I I can grab them.
So like if it was just anybody's event, we have it up, Christine, we have it up for a week or two?
One week or possibly two weeks.
Okay, so if it was just anybody, we would put it up for two weeks, which means it would go up like the fifteenth, so I would put it up either the week of the, so April eighth or April fifteenth.
I've, I've reserved the banner for a specific timeframe, Lauren, do you happen to have that?
If not, I can grab it.
We can check.
I don't have it offhand. I don't have it offhand, but I think it's reserved in the book already. Yeah, it's reserved. Thanks, Christina.
Thank you.
And what other banners are scheduled to go up? Um, I don't know, but we would.
I took whatever available time in our window that I could.
Okay. I feel like it's the last two weeks.
They don't do it across there.
No.
Strawberry Festival. Strawberry Festival.
Maybe strawberry, we have.
Christina will have it in her book.
April twenty nine.
It can't be April twenty ninth, that's too late.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's two weeks, but I feel like it's the last.
And you have it going up April twenty nine? Yeah, but that's too late. No, no.
That's less than a week before the first event.
What else is in the book? Well, people reserve stuff, uh, are you in advance?
Yeah. We, we don't have any conflicts, um, so we can move it up at this point.
Well, I think we should leave it up for all those times. Yeah, I think either as of April eighth or April fifteen.
Oh, yeah.
Leave it up for May? Yeah, do the last, um, section. When is the next, uh, reserved stuff?
Anastasia, what is the timeframe for delivery of the street banner?
As long as we get approval. Uh.
We're gonna get approval, but.
Today, oh, so I, I can get it in four days.
Okay.
Okay, are, are we good with this banner though, so she can take it and get it printed and ready? Um, yes. So. Okay, so. Is everyone good with it?
I just wanna make sure there's no chance that there'll be other dates.
Well, if there are other dates, we'll have to give it a banner.
No, there's no other dates, and it takes her four days to do a new banner if something should happen.
No.
Okay. And, and we would bring this down in like. And we can always take down the banner and then.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
And we do have the, you know, the electronic sign that allows us to, to get stuff out, send photographs.
Yeah.
So Christina, what are the other dates booked in May?
So, in May. On the school.
Vote, probably.
Vote, yes.
Which is what date?
The thirteenth and the twentieth, we do the thirteenth and the twentieth.
Okay, so we can leave this banner up until that time?
Yeah.
Okay. And that'll be.
Okay, so they'll come down in three days before it'll be fun, the last event, yeah.
That's fine. So we both have seen it for a long time. So we're starting on April eighth, yes.
Eighth, okay.
Okay. Through, through May. Yeah.
April eighth?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, that's good. And yet you will be surprised.
We have triangle signs in.
Yes, we're doing triangle signs as well.
In two, right?
Yeah.
Alright, can you move on?
Yep.
Everyone good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah, and that's a good, and the envision? Yeah, it's a door there. And is this a two, a double sided sign?
No, it's just one side, um, I.
Well, it needs to be double sided. Well, it's not, this, it's not visible. It has to be Millwood too. Right, but it's not visible from the other side, but then you need a second, so are these two different signs?
Yes, did you say it has to be double sided?
No, it can't be double sided, it's not visible from the other side.
Oh, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
Okay.
Yeah, I.
Is, are the dates gonna be big enough on that sign?
That's the debatable part, right, so.
Or should we just have the website?
Either way, whatever.
Have you heard anything of the website?
Yeah.
I think the dates are important. People will, will see them when they're walking up and down the street, so.
And I mean, and, and maybe it's, I mean, it's just my opinion, but I feel like the website's more important than the date.
Well, is there no way to do both? Well, one is on one and one's on the other side. Yeah, but you're just saying we can't see both sides. No, 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 but it doesn't mean that we can't get a second sign, so we would have one on one side and one on the other, so one coming down the hill and one as you walk. Okay, um, what about the Millwood sign, I mean, I should know this, but you don't see it from the other side, right? No.
No.
So we'll just have both. Yeah, we would do, we would do both, um, and we just have to make sure that we have room. Is there room?
Um, I forget the triangle, usually it, it is Millwood.
So can you do a taller sign and have envision in the middle? And the dates on top and the website on the bottom? So the, the, um, the the banners, the triangle sign banners slide into channels.
Right.
So that there's, there'll be to spend them larger or small, if there's all of the. There's no room.
But you can do two that work together.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, that's a good idea. So I would mean.
Is there, is there space during the timeframe on the triangle? To do two?
Yeah, she has to go check it. Bring all your books. You can do envision for the first one and then on the second sign, the dates and envision Newcastle or make them larger.
Yeah.
Definitely. That, that's a great.
Okay, but let's just see whether or not she has space.
Okay.
Anastasia.
The, the problem is, it just doesn't give us any flexibility if only one is up there.
Yeah. Anastasia, I think when you have the website on the signs, instead of using all caps, it might be easier for people to remember if you use upper and lowercase.
Yep, okay, that's a good tip, I would.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Especially the two N's. Yeah, yeah.
Envision Newcastle.
Good point.
Christina, do you have the Millwood sign as well?
Yes.
Okay.
That's it.
So on all time.
Yep.
Just for two seconds to just locate everything.
So in May, we do have train envisioning already, something for T Town.
Okay. Okay, so envisionings, we have, okay, just one.
One.
One sign, five.
One sign, yeah.
Okay, and how many weeks is that up for?
Um, envisioning is one, two, three, four, five, all May. It was put for, uh.
Okay, and, and the, and the April.
It should probably start.
Oh, maybe it would.
Well, what about the same dates as the banner?
And then actually. And it started April twenty second, so you wanna start at April?
How about doing it with? April fifteenth through April eighth, what do we, do we have room?
April eighth. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So do you have two slots or only one?
Um. I have two slots for the first two weeks and then, oh no, wait, I have two slots for all of April. And then yeah, actually, they, they switch off, so I have two spots throughout May right now.
Okay, so let's take two slots and, and Anastasia, let's can we, can we do them like tag team, envision on the top one and then the, the dates a little bit bigger and the website
Yeah.
a little bit bigger with the upper and lowercase on the second sign? Okay, so from April, April eighth through May sixth.
Can, can, can I, is April eighth too early? Do we not wanna wait a week? Uh, again, I'm a little bit concerned about plastering all this and then having it become white noise before the events.
That's right after break. But that is almost a month before the first event.
It would entirely be.
I.
I, I don't see the harm.
I agree.
I really don't, I, I don't think we're talking about a month, we're talking about an extra week.
Yep.
People just come back from spring break, their eyes will be fresh at that time.
Give people time to get food visiters if they wanna attend the events.
Right, right. I, I think we leave it out.
Put on calendars.
From April eighth through middle of May.
I agree.
From May eighteenth.
I just wanted to confirm that you're okay with that.
I, I understand the, the risk that you're worried about Sabrina, but I think that is, um, I think it's still worthwhile to make sure that people can't
Yeah. Say, yeah. Yeah, we have, we want young families to participate, like Ellie's saying, you know, they need childcare. And people are busy, they don't always have time to look at the triangle, so. Now, I think it's a good span of time. And Christina, what about the Millwood sign?
Um, so the Millwood sign is.
Do you want these signs in Millwood as well?
What's that?
You want these signs in Millwood as well?
Oh, yeah. Yes, absolutely.
So we need to double them.
Well, yeah, for the triangle signs, not for the banner, there's no place.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, but this is the, but i- is it the same specs for Millwood? I didn't.
One second, we're, we're just gonna check availability.
Yes, so we do have to space them in alcohol in both locations, cause we do have six slots here.
Okay. For the same dates?
Yes.
Okay, let's, so yeah, Anastasia, if we can double the, um, the triangle signs, that'd be great.
Okay, the specs are the same in Millwood as they are in.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. Alright, we can do that, uh, ready to move on to the next?
Yes.
Okay, great, so, um, this is our train kiosk, um, that will let me just kinda zoom in, so the idea here is, um, I wa- I was there last week or the week before of measuring, um, and the idea here is really that we have these, the, the poles that are wrapped, I don't know if we're gonna need a hanging banner here. Um, I don't want it to look, um, too busy or cheesy, so we will, I'm gonna be ordering, as long as you guys like everything, I'll be ordering one of these and installing it and testing it out, making sure how good it looks and we'll, the idea is to have these three wrapped um, with these kind of interactive, I'll zoom in, these interactive uh, boards around it, and I'll show you. So, the idea is that, I'm gonna zoom all the way in. This map will make sense to you in a little while, or if you saw, this is, this is our map from our walking tour, but the idea is you have the logo, you have take a virtual tour during your commute, share your.
Yeah, that's great, I like that.
Your vision, and it type right there, share your vision, and then you would scan this, um, and it would, it would go right to that tour, so this would go up, um, once the walking tour launched in, in May, that first week in May. Um, so this would go up at that same time, this wouldn't be beforehand, this is, this is like interactive, this is for the, the commuters to interact. So the idea is that this would take them to the virtual tour, this again is our graphics for sharing your vision. If they wanna live, uh, attend a live session, these dates will be here, um, and then with, there are just some different designs, so that way, one, one, you know, they'll look a little different, we'll have two that are duplicated and, um, one that has the map. And each of them have the QR codes and the dates.
How durable is the material those are?
So. So they're, uh, they're pretty durable, but, um, we've never had them, you know, like outside for this length of time, I mean, they're gonna be covered. So, um, they are on the affordable side when we were looking them, so the idea is that again, we test it, making, make sure that it's good, if we need to order like two backups, three backups, we will. Um, but, uh, yes, they they are.
I'm not a big fan of the hanging banner myself, cause especially if it's hanging right under Chappaqua.
I don't think we need it, but, um, I, I.
Well, I li- I like it, I think it draws the eye and it, it'll make people pay attention to the poles. Like, what, what would the option be to remove it?
Yeah, so if the poles are.
She said it was.
Yeah, if the poles are loud, cause they're gonna be from here to here, I'm gonna take a picture, I'm gonna test it, take a picture and show you guys. Um, but when, if we feel like the poles might do it justice, you know, and if it does, then, then we're good, I mean, these, my, the banners come in four days, so that.
So the poles are just what you're, what you're showing us on the side, you know, the blue and white?
Yeah.
I like the colorful banner and I would really like it to be up.
Okay.
I don't see what the, what the harm is.
Okay.
Can I ask about the line that says want to attend a live session, which I think helps everyone understand what the dates are for?
Mm-hmm.
Um, whereas in previous slides, when you showed us materials that had dates on them, it doesn't mention the live session.
Hmm.
Should, should the materials, like the banner that's hanging you know, on the main street and, um, and the signs that now we have two that are going you know, in each of those standing signs, should it say attend a live session along with the dates?
So, the challenge with that is the space, um, which is why we didn't, um uh, include those in, in that, is that we, we would be fighting with, um, text space and, and font size.
Cause I just didn't feel like the dates, it was clear what the dates were, you know, and now I see it on these, they're gonna, it's gonna be on the kiosks. But will people just know what those dates are?
No, but curiosity isn't bad.
Yeah. Okay. Um, you know, Anastasia, I, I also am wondering, did we get, do we need permission from Metro North? Um, so, so. To do this and, and. That's ours, um, is that?
Yeah.
I'm wondering, and also, it might not be a good idea to put it, they might object to it being under
Oh.
Chappaqua, because, you know, we're affecting what, you know, the name of the station as people go by, so can we put it between two different poles?
Yeah, we could put it here, um, we could put it here, we might be even be able to, depending on, I don't know, um.
But they could, they could object that we're making, you know.
Yeah, that's a good point.
We people should know what, what station they're getting off at, but we don't wanna obscure.
Yes.
But that's. That's on the, that's on the parking lot side though, so it's not like where the trains are, where the trucks are, it's like next to Bobo's.
Oh, yeah. Okay, so you're not, people are not seeing it from the other side, I don't know if it's two sided.
It's a platform. It's a, it's a.
Yeah, I'm not even sure it's two, two sided.
I, I was gonna make this.
Is it two sided? I just don't.
Well, this, this was gonna be one sided.
No, 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 the Chappaqua signs, well, they're in others.
Oh, this, oh, this, ugh, I don't know.
I just don't wanna get into, I just don't wanna have any problems with Metro North because we're interfering with the sign.
Okay.
Their sign.
Yeah, he could just run it by and make.
Well, I don't know, that's what I'm asking.
I think it's ours then. Because we, we own the station, that's, that's an extension of the train station.
It's ours.
It's ours?
Yes.
It's ours.
Okay, if it's ours, then, then we can leave it.
Okay. Alright.
The reason for this whole kiosk is we can't do anything on MTA property. So all of this is on our property.
Okay, good.
Is everyone good with the, what, what do you want to see here?
Um.
Or does that feel limiting to the?
Oh, right.
Oh, to see here, right.
I don't mind it because it is included in the, you know? It is included in the overall space that we're looking at, whereas when it was, when it was.
Yeah, it is in the, in the space.
Well, it didn't make sense, but over here it kinda does.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's actually in space.
It is.
Yeah, okay, I think it's good.
Okay, great, moving on.
Anyone else have, no?
Okay. Okay, so for the walking tour, our, uh, signs for each of the locations. Um, I am, we're currently working with the signage partners to get you guys a physical mockup, and I will send that to you, but, um, I had to send them the graphics first. Um, so this is the idea, each of the, each of the signs would obviously be different. I did write on here that they will be twelve by eighteen, um, so it's a pretty decent size. And you'll have, I'm gonna zoom in so you can see a little bit better, so when you, when when you head over and you see a sign, I'm just gonna scoot in, these, these blue, I'm gonna go really close and then I'll back you guys up. Um, you have a legend here for this map that shows, you know, here's Town Hall, this is the parking lot, this is our field, this is the train station, this is the parking lot. So they get a grasp of where everything is, um, and then these are our, uh, our stations where the signs will be, it will say you're standing here. Um, you'll have info from the walking tour script that you guys approved, we'll have info here that will relate to the videos and that will be here up about that specific spot. Then when you come over to the right side of the sign, you will then have, um, the QR code that goes to the video. Um, we will also have the actual link there for it, just in case anything goes wrong. Um, and then there is a join us and, so each sign will look like this, but be tailored to the spot that it is in.
Looks good.
When you go through everything, can you make sure that the way the website's written is consistent?
Yes, I'm gonna make it, uh, the way you, you had asked, is with regular caps. Make sure that the E and the N and the C are, um.
Capitalized.
Capitalized, yeah. So that way it's easier to read. So that way it's easier to read. Okay, we're gonna move on, we're almost there. Um, our uh traveling kiosk uh that will. Um, be at the farmer's market or wherever you wanted to be with you. Um, the idea of this is that it's a like, I was calling it this like dynamic cube. So these panels, uh, you could buy different sets of panels and they could be intertwined, you could snap them in and out of different spots. So the idea was that the first version, first version of this cube would be more marketing based, so they could take a virtual tour. They could, you know, that they could see the map, um. Then it's more marketing based, the second version, as we start to get feedback. As we start to have, uh, as we go along, we can print another set. That, I don't know, that they could, you can have where they actually respond, uh, you know, we could do that beforehand too, but that they actually respond. Uh, that they have the, you know, they can submit some feedback, they can, we can have points on, that we've learned uh from the sessions. Uh, so for talking points, so the idea of that, this is that we would live first as a um, as a marketing piece. Uh, bright, able to see it in the farmer's market, go over and scan it, see what's going on. Um, register for an event, that kind of thing and, and then it would, it could grow as um. As it goes.
When does the farmer's market start again?
May. I have this down. Uh, I have May first as the.
May first.
Yeah, so on May one is a Wednesday, so it's, it's a Saturday, so it's either the fourth or the eleventh, if you, Jen, if you're saying the length, that makes sense.
I wrote May first.
This won't be up for long before our events.
I think it's May fourth. Yes, I think you checked for me Jill, you said it was the fourth.
And that's what we told him.
So we have the um.
Okay, well, I like the portable kiosks.
Yeah, and it would, like I said, it could, if, if you're getting feedback that's like, oh, you know, you might say, oh, hey, can we have a panel that says this? I don't know, you know.
Yeah, I mean, we could, we could move it, it doesn't have to be at the farmer's market, it could be at the Great Stuff Plaza area.
It can be, it can actually be in Town Hall during the week.
That's what I was thinking. You could go to different places, yeah.
Yep, right. We'll traveling, marketing, and that's it, that's your last, the other.
That's it, okay, that's great. Well, thank you very much, I think you guys did a great job.
Thank you very much.
And you covered, covered a lot.
Okay, I'm gonna find out about the twenty-one letters.
Oh, yeah, that's, that's my job.
Please let me know.
Okay, I will, I will get back to you tomorrow on that.
Okay. Yeah, I will edit and order the banners.
Great, okay.
Yep.
Okay. Alright, so any next steps that we have with you after we get all of the, all of the material?
Um, not for me, no, I mean, you guys will. Um, you guys are gonna hang everything up and everyone's gonna get excited.
This pretty much completes the whole package, right?
Yeah.
We're all set, I mean, unless the only thing that could change is if we add dates. Um, you know, more sessions, but we don't necessarily need more. Or graphics.
Well, we'll have the updated.
We'll have your social medias. Yeah.
Yes, that will just, you won't need to see me for that, that will just be fed to you. Um, and the other thing you do need uh to approve actually for next steps. I have on my checklist, um, is the walking tour, the videos that we make, that people are gonna watch. So, the goal is keep recording those next week, this weekend and into next week. And then be in production of editing that during spring break. And then you guys would get those videos when you get back, uh, when we get back, uh, for your approval on the videos.
Okay, so is that, do we need another meeting with you for that?
That's up to you guys, I, I mean, you can watch them and be like, these are amazing, we love them, and uh.
I'm sure that's what we're gonna say, but.
But yes, it's, I'll leave it.
Sorry, did, did you say what, did you say when that would be ready? I was distracted by the noise. I'm like, what caused them to lower that? They don't, if we can hear it, they don't need it that loud.
So.
April, let's do it, um, we'll have it for April, right?
Yes, absolutely.
So we come back from break on the eighth, this is our first day, that one day, so figure, or will, so does that work for you Anastasia, as far as, you know, the Google date?
Yes, I, that's the date I have down, yeah, the ninth, yeah.
Perfect.
Okay. Okay, okay, so we're seeing. Yeah, that's good, that'll be enough time to make any changes if we.
Yep, and then we.
Would there be an option to change? Because you will have.
Well.
Does that in, does it involve drone footage?
Yes, um, so I.
Okay, well, I'm sure you'll do a good job the first time.
Exactly, um, I can send you the raw footage of the drone footage, um.
Well, listen, I, I, I think we need to, i- if I may, the, the, the consultant are graphic, graphic experts. I think that if there's changes that need to be made regarding drone footage. We can kinda swap that out because the footage is the footage, it's not like printing a sign.
Correct, yes.
Yeah.
And so I think we need to wait and see what we have and how it runs. Does, does that work for you Anastasia?
Yeah, that total, that works, goes.
Yeah, we'll stay.
It's us.
We can't get all the information on, on the sign, but we'll go to the website to sign up, like everything will be.
And actually, as far as these sessions, um, should we be planning to attend or not attending?
Yes, we should, no, 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 no.
And actually, chatroom meetings.
We should, yeah.
All of them?
And any role.
We should try, yeah.
Any role, okay, cool.
Okay, that's, I just wanna make sure that you guys have. And yeah, this is so fun.
Yeah, it's gonna be great.
Okay.
Okay, um, any other questions, Anastasia?
Thank you so much, thank you.
Oh, thank you, we got, done a great job, we really appreciate it.
Very, very.
Have a great evening, thank you so much.
Okay, bye bye.
Thank you.
So Sabrina, I'm so sorry because our schedule got just away from us, what a shock. Um, can you just give us just a two second quick MS four update, um, so that uh, we, I can let you go back to your meeting?
Right, and I, I just wanna say, this was a meeting that was convened by Pete Harkam and Chris Verdic also hosted it, and it was a new meeting yesterday. Regarding the MS four permit requirements, I just wanna put that in context. Um, and Sabrina can give us the details of what the MS four is? And, and the requirements, so that people have.
I can give you a ten minute overview, how about that?
Well, okay, that sounds like a long time, but go ahead.
Alright, not even, I, I mean, I was just.
Please do, please do.
Y- yeah, so, so this past year in January, the New York State DEC promulgated updates to the municipal separate storm sewer system permit. The MS four permit. This new permit has um heightened requirements for the municipalities. Uh, specific requirements in relation to the east of Hudson watershed. The meeting uh that occurred yesterday was specifically for the east of Hudson watershed municipalities. We are one of twenty-two of those municipalities that exist in Westchester, Putnam and Duchess County. Um, specifically, the heightened permit requirements are going to change. Um, the way we currently conduct our street sweeping operations, how we manage our roadways. Um, our reporting regarding um septic system failures. There's a new aspect to the permit which requires us to ensure that every homeowner who has a septic system. Has their system pumped out every five years, we need to develop a new, a new program. To track and administer that aspect. So there's a lot of nitty gritty, uh, right down to education where we can no longer do just blanket education. We need to focus education on a pollutant in a specific area. Um, I was in a meeting today regarding the Indian Brook watershed or the Village of Austin's drinking war. Drinking water source protection plan, our entire west end is within that watershed. They are talking about going door to door with information to provide to homeowners regarding their impact on the watershed. So yesterday's conversation with state representatives um. Was helpful in that we were, eh, we were able to provide them real information. You know, for example, for the past two or three years, we have been trying to get a new vac truck, we have submitted grant applications to get a new vac truck. We have specifically stated in those applications that right now with the equipment we have, it takes twice as long. Because we have to go back to DPW to get different equipment. If a drain is clogged, we, you know, we, we need more manpower if a drain is clogged. The, the storage area in that truck for sediment is much smaller than what it should be, so we are taking time and going across town. To dump the sediment that is being sucked out of the catch basins more frequently. The same three guys who are running that street sweeping operation get called off of street sweeping operations when there's a water main break. The state does not have any indication as, and we're one of the lucky municipalities, we have staff that do this work. There are many municipalities that don't have staff, they use consultants entirely. What the state does not understand is how we operate and what our priorities are and the minimal. Staffing that we have to handle these unfunded requirements that they're asking us to undertake. So we submit grant applications and we specifically tell them why we need this, and that if you give us monies for a new truck. We will be able to do fifty percent more than what we're doing now, if not seventy percent more. So that we can meet with the requirements of the permit instead of always falling short. They still deny us, they deny us over minor technicalities time after time, and it keeps changing why they keep denying us. And so we had that conversation, they've talked about meeting in work gr- in a work group with the east of Hudson watershed. Uh, representatives to really flesh out this, the programs and how they maybe are willing to change them, I don't know. Um, I don't have much hope cuz this permit is um, is promulgated. There's fines attached to the permit, we have reporting deadlines. Um, I am in the process right now of updating our storm water management plan. That plan needs to be updated to be available to the public by July. Our first report on that new plan is due in October. We are required to meet these deadlines, we had to submit a notice of intent by a certain date, we did that, so. I'm not sure how the state can have conversations about changing the program for us. Um, what they can do is um, help us with allocate, dedicated funding. For our programs that are not need based, but are programmatic based. So that's something that we're working towards. Um, but you will hear more about the specifics of the program. As the plan is developed and it's ready to be put out for public comment, uh, which will be happening.
Alright, so, one of the problems, right Sabrina, is that it's a competitive grant structure.
Yeah, every grant.
Competitive nature of it is completely inappropriate to the fact that, to the, to the goals of clean water. Then this is for New York City, right, we're in the New York City watershed. So, all of this work is not for our benefit, it's for the benefit of New York City. And we were told that New York City isn't interested in participating in the cost of this, so I think that. They really need to press on that angle, because this is for their benefit.
Yeah.
So it just, if, the funding structure doesn't make sense. Who is responsible for the cost, doesn't it make sense? I mean, it makes sense that we're responsible for the work and we all. Um, establish that we're, we're in agreement with the goals, we all want to contribute. You know, you know, do our share.
I, I think it's worth noting supervisor that, that the program is for the entire town. The, there's heightened permit requirements for the east of Hudson watershed that. Serves New York City's drink, that, that it contributes to New York City's drinking water. So the, the program affects the entire town, but there's specific. Requirements which require more effort and more money for the east of Hudson watershed.
That, correct, correct.
I, I don't wanna, I don't want this to, misunderstanding that it doesn't affect the entire town, but it does.
Right, but it's the, the heightened requirements that we're talking about.
Correct. So I, I don't know if you need anything else for me, but I gotta run too much.
No, thank you Sabrina, I just wanted people to know what we were doing about this issue and that we met with our state reps. And uh, that this is an ongoing issue for the town and for our future budget.
Absolutely.
And I fully expect that we will be hearing more about this um, in upcoming months. Um, because it's not gonna be, it's not gonna be resolved, so um.
Right.
Yeah, so, so the, you know, the community can expect to hear more about it in the sport, so.
Okay, alright, thank you so much Sabrina.
Thanks Sabrina.
Everyone have a good night, thank you, goodbye.
Thank you.
Okay, um, and the next thing on our agenda, our next topic is the yellow ribbon campaign. I've talked at the last meeting and a few weeks before, um, about our town doing something. That is specifically meaningful to recognize the hostages in Israel, this is important. To many people in town, and so we are going to be participating in the yellow ribbon campaign the way they do um. Uh, in Israel, so we're gonna have yellow ribbons arriving in town soon and we're going to be. Affixing them to the um fence at the ball field, um, and writing the names of the hostages, you know, one per. At the rec field, sorry, yeah, um. And so I just wanted to let the community know that, that was the follow up to, to our discussions on how to. Best represent our solidarity and um, remembrance of the hostages. And that, that's really it, does anyone wanna comment on that?
I just wanted to know, um, the number, is it one for every one that was taken at the beginning or the ones that are still held?
Well, our intention was to do a ribbon for all the, the remaining hostages, yeah.
Do you want to share how, are we starting to, have ribbon, or still putting that?
Um, we, we will share the details later, we're getting the ribbons next week and um, yeah, we'll, we'll share the details. Um, later on, okay. That. That's all about that, um, Jill, do you want to go on to the administrative?
Sure, we'll just review them very quickly, we've got a retroactive payment of claims, our checks that will be dated um, March thirteenth. We've got adoption of minutes from earlier meetings, um, adoption of monthly reports from February of twenty twenty-four. Uh, we've got an authorization to attend the national planning conference online, um, Sabrina traditionally goes to um, one of these meetings. Ones on the east coast, ones on the west coast, they had been alternating years and they finally have decided to do it online, so um, that's good. Um, we um, are gonna enter into an agreement um, with the Seven Bridges Swim Club for our um, summer camp. Uh, authorization to award the bid for DPW for the water main replacement for Pinecliff and Meadow Lane. Uh, we, we will be moving ahead with those projects that we talked about last week.
Oh Jill, what is the timing for that? Now that we've got the um.
The award of bid, there are thirty ways, I think, that, right, they get a notice to proceed in those thirty days.
Yeah, I, I hadn't seen the timeline.
Yeah, um, I will, um, uh.
Think the neighbors wanna know?
Yeah, we, we, the neighbors will be getting more information, um, they were, um, they did some work on Alden last week. Um, in anticipation of this work and um, there will be um. Information going out to neighbors, so it's Pinecliff and Meadow, um, and a section of bridge. If residents on those streets haven't been receiving uh e-alerts. Um, it's because you haven't signed up for them, um, and I urge you to go on our website, sign up for the new um, e-alert system through Civic Plus. Um, it's terrific and it's the most efficient way for us to be able to give you real time notifications. About uh, activity on your block and how it's going to impact you. Um, uh, replacing water mains unfortunately is a um. Um, a, a, a uh, onerous and uh, uh inconvenient process, but it is well worth it. And uh, we're hoping to get in and out as quickly as possible, um, and we will be getting you uh direct updates um, on that. So, get it from DPW for those, yes. Um, um, and last but not least is an authorization to approve uh east of Hudson Water uh Shed Corporation, um. Operation and Maintenance Agreement, uh, because this is a bill that is over ten thousand dollars, we bring it to the board for their approval. Um, uh, unfortunately, it is a um, it's a component of our. Support and contributions of east of Hudson efforts, again, to support the New York City watershed.
I would say we get reimbursed for this tip.
And we'll say we get reimbursed for this typically by the county, I know it's not guaranteed, but we have every year for, since I can think of.
So, we're, we're hopeful, but we don't bank on it. Okay, um, okay, we've got um. A number of proposed actions and we also have uh, two additional um. Resolutions as well.
Okay, are we ready to um?
Yes.
Okay, um, well, Jenny, so we can do the last two.
Okay, I'm sorry, there is one correction on the um, on the resolutions, it's number four. Um, minimum wage is now sixteen dollars, so the uh, the range for payment, it's sixteen, there is two thousand dollars amount, okay.
Okay, Holly, do you wanna start?
I moved to retroactively approve the payment of claims to the amount of three hundred ninety two thousand five hundred fifty five dollars in the deposit. This one was submitted in the check registry, it's been on through the Delaware state on March thirteenth, twenty twenty four. Checks are printed and distributed to each payment listed on the state of March thirteenth, twenty twenty four, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I moved to authorize the hiring of Dishard Javon Raj for the position of recreation attendant. The new Recreation and Parks Department to serve as an arts center assistant at the hourly rate of sixteen dollars per hour, effective April eighth, twenty twenty four, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I moved to authorize the posting and hiring of two summer interns at the Millwood Water Treatment Plant for a period of eight to twelve weeks at the hourly rate of sixteen dollars per hour for a forty hour work week. Paid partially through the Mike Markus internship.
All in favor?
Aye.
I moved to authorize the posting and hiring of two labors in the water unit as well as two labors within the highway unit of the Department of Public Works at an hourly rate ranging from sixteen dollars to nineteen dollars per hour. For a period of twelve weeks.
All in favor?
Aye.
I moved to authorize the hiring of Joshua Guerrero to position fourth grade police officer with the Newcastle Police Department. Annual salary of eighty thousand nineteen dollars ninety four cents, effective March twenty fifth, two thousand twenty four. This resolution hereby revizes the previous season's up and upgraded twenty seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I I moved toward DPW two thousand twenty four dash thirteen, water main replacement, pardon me, water main replacement on Pine Cliff Road in Meadow Lane. Alternate bid to legacy supply LLC for the total amount of one million one hundred fifty three thousand four hundred fifteen dollars.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Jen?
I moved to authorize the recommitment of Kent Thomas as co-chair, Vivek Argoski as a member of the Sustainability Advisory Board. For a two year term effective April sixth, twenty twenty four, April fifth, twenty twenty six.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I moved to accept the stipulation of agreement dated March nineteenth, twenty twenty four. An irrevocable letter of resignation from Employee Shield number one eight seven, effective close of business on March nineteenth, twenty twenty four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's it, everyone?
Um, actually, we're gonna go back into executive session.
So, motion to adjourn the work session and to go back into executive session?
And then adjourn?
Yeah, they, they could come out and chat, but.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.